This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Southampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 9193, and live streaming on their webpage is hamptonmedia.org. Consulars who are participating in this meeting are gathering hybrid, and order extended until March 25th, which allow us to do so. A remind both, the member of the city council and the public participating remote, remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the direction of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby?
President.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley? Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
Owen Zerret?
Here.
Please stand up for the place of allegiance. Place of allegiance. Approve of the minutes. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to approve the minutes of the March 20th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic, no listed under the public hearing. If you want to participate in anything that is not part of the public hearing, go to the podium. You will have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and just address all your comments just to the city council. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Le Pen. I live at 28B Pine Street here in East Hampton. I've been a resident here for 18 years, and I'm here to ask the city council to pass a resolution in support of the Cherish Act, which would increase funding for public higher education in Massachusetts. Public higher education is integral to the local economy here in East Hampton. Hundreds of residents and their families depend on the employment at one of our public colleges and universities to live and reside here in East Hampton. 152 current East Hampton residents are enrolled at Holyoke Community College alone. 91 students will be graduating from East Hampton High School in a few months and deserve affordable public higher education options. Data shows that students who attend our public colleges and universities are significantly more likely to stay in-state upon graduation, to live, start a family, start a business, buy a home, buy a car, and pay taxes. East Hampton residents deserve access to high-quality, debt-free public higher education that affords them the ability to graduate without debt and build their lives and professions here in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Honorable Counselors and members of East Hampton. My name is Rachel Revard. I live at 68 Cottage Street Apartment 4. I come from a family of special educators originally from Connecticut, so the Cherish Act is really deeply important to me. Upon graduating from U S in 2015 with a bachelor's in music education, I faced the reality in a form of a $1,100 monthly student loan payment, which would loom over my head until my early 60s. This monthly amount was more than my rent and meant that I needed to get into the workforce quickly. So I accepted my first job as a middle school band teacher in Springfield, where the vibrant talent of my students gave me the spark that I still have today. Just in case you didn't know, a master's degree is necessary for educators in Massachusetts to earn their professional licensure. This means that educators are forced into continuing education after their bachelor's, even when they cannot afford it. And for teachers like me in music, there is little financial support for this. Programs like public service loan forgiveness exist, and the SAFE program exists, but with these opportunities, they are only federal student loans that they support. I had to rely on both federal and private loans to finance my studies, and my family could not afford to help me, and as a result, I have about $78,000 of private loan debt and 23 of federal loan debt. So that's why this act is very important to me. Also, I am the Director of Education at the Community Music School of Springfield, where we run a college prep program specific for students of color who are looking to get into the workforce for music education. And recently, we had our conversation about financial literacy, and it was a really, really hard conversation to have with them. So this act would be hugely beneficial for not only upcoming educators, but also for our community at large. Change has to come if Massachusetts is going to improve, and it's evident that in my students' faces, when we talk about the numbers, that change hopefully can happen sooner rather than later. That change can start with the Cherish Act. This vital legislation seeks to address the very issues that I just spoke about, but the impact of the Cherish Act goes beyond the walls of our institution. It reverberates through our communities and into our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gwen Morrissey, 17 Mayor Street. I don't have my prepared remarks, but I'm coming as an--
Just one second.
Yep.
Can you please mute yourself? Are you participating remote? I don't want to mute everybody and then we have to go through different process. Please keep muted. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have my usual written-up remarks, but I am coming to you as an education researcher and an educationist and a believer in public education by training and trade. And I work in particular in the state of Massachusetts Juvenile Justice System. I work to understand how young people who are incarcerated in this state get access to education just to get a high school diploma, and we have increasing numbers of young people enrolled in post-secondary opportunities, including at a number of community colleges across the state. It is harder and harder for those young people to persist into a community college or four-year college careers after they leave the Department of Youth Services support system, because it gets more and more expensive, and they are already coming from backgrounds and communities that have extraordinary obstacles to participation in the job economy and in higher education. So, on the one hand, it's good for a very small number of people, because it is also true that we increasingly incarcerate fewer and fewer kids every year. Good for us. But, in general, I think that-- I know that you guys are feeling resolutioned out. And what is the purpose of stating that we have an opinion as a community about something that can only be affected at the state level? The point is to say that as a community, we believe that this thing, the Cherish Act, Higher Education for All, is a good thing for our state's future to express that we as a community have a vision, and we believe in making it possible for more and more people to gain access to the higher education world, especially state-funded ones that have this extraordinary history founded in Massachusetts. The public education system was founded here in the mid-1800s, and I think that we have a duty to do better by our publicly funded systems, to actually publicly fund them. And we now have opportunities to take money from billionaires. There are at least 25 of them on this year's Forbes report. So let's take some of their money. We already have the Fair Share Act in place. We've got money that is available specifically for public education. I would like to ensure that East Hampton stands for sending that to people in the higher ed system as well as in K-12. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Jackie Brusso Pereira, 39 Garfield Avenue, East Hampton. I work at the University of Massachusetts, so one of our public higher education institutions. And as you know, later this evening, you'll be asked to consider a resolution to support the Cherish Act, which is an act to support increased state funding for public higher education. The purpose of this act is to help students graduate from public higher education without debt. So I work at the University of Massachusetts, and mostly I work with students who have had some struggles throughout their college career. And I regularly beat with students who are struggling to afford college. Financial aid is available to them, but it's never enough to cover the gap between an expected family contribution and their tuition bill. Sometimes students opt to take private, unsubsidized loans that leave them with thousands of dollars of debt. Sometimes they have to pay that right away, and other times they begin to pay it after graduation. I've also seen students who opt to work 30 to 40 hours a week or more in order to afford college. The problem is that they end up exhausted and unable to focus on their studies, jeopardizing their academic success. Each semester, I work with a handful of students who are scrambling to pay their tuition bill at the start of the semester. In those situations, those students are prohibited from registering for classes until they've sorted out that bill. That means that they have to start the semester at least a week after everyone else. So they're already falling behind their peers. And this makes it much harder for them to get caught up in classes and for them to be successful in college. Our higher education system in Massachusetts, as it stands right now, continues to punish students for being poor. These are students we're encouraging to get a degree to improve their lives, and it's not working. Our system's not working well. Let's use the Cherish Act to support public higher education. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Deb Friedman, 9 Chapman Ave. I'm Jewish. I have a few prepared remarks. A good number of us East Hampton supporters of the ceasefire resolution before you have spoken to you already at two Rules Committee meetings as well as a city council meeting, March 20th. We've also said we will engage in dialogue with anyone who's interested after the resolution is passed. Please pass this ceasefire resolution tonight without change or delay. Whatever you think about Hamas's horrible crimes on October 7th, Netanyahu and his government are now the ones carrying out evil every day. Nearly two-thirds of the over 30,000 Gazans killed by the Israeli military are women and children, 10,000 children alone. Whether or not every single Gazan man who has been killed was a Hamas fighter, which is highly unlikely, or even most of them, the ongoing disproportionate punishment of innocent civilians is no less a crime. Reports also say that the Israeli government is preventing enough humanitarian aid from reaching the starving population, and Gazans who are sick or injured also have little chance of receiving adequate medical care. On Monday, seven international aid workers from World Central Kitchen-- I'm sure you all heard about this-- were killed by the Israeli military despite having fully disclosed who they were and where they were operating. This organization has said it now has to pause aid operations in Gaza because of the attack. Clearly, the actions of the Israeli government haven't saved any of the remaining hostages, and it doesn't take much to realize that more Gazan deaths won't make Israelis permanently safe, no matter how many of our U.S. tax dollars go to provide more weapons to Israel. Psychological trauma will affect all Gazan children for years to come, and not just the large number who have been orphaned or injured. Some of them will no doubt look for solace in the hatred that many were too young to know or feel before this started. We need to begin addressing what it will take to prevent the consequences of what's happening now rather than allowing it to continue.
Thank you.
Please pass this resolution now.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Greenstein, Precinct 3. I come here tonight tired of thinking of all the possible words and ways I could convince you all that we must use our small voice here in East Hampton to say stop the genocide of Palestinians by the Israeli government. Passing a resolution declaring ourselves in favor of a ceasefire should not be a difficult one if it is that we all share the same value, that life is precious. As a white woman, whitish woman, I abhor discrimination and oppression of people of color around the world. As a straight woman, I abhor seeing the hate and violence targeting my LGBTQ+ friends. And as an American, I abhor seeing my country commit subversive acts and undermine the self-determination of poor and developing countries. And as a Jew, I abhor the idea that to be against the ethnic cleansing and genocide of the Palestinian people is somehow anti-Semitic. It's not. Is it really a radical idea to see another's perspective and to question the erroneous narratives we've been fed about Israel and Palestine? I think not. Ceasefire now. Please pass the resolution.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jean Allen. I live at 10 Sutton Place in Precinct 2. I'm part of the community that has worked on the resolution. I'm a member of Pax Christian, a nurse practitioner, and I try and see things through the lens of nonviolence and health care. There are about 17,000 unaccompanied children in Gaza as a result of the war. That's approximately the population of East Hampton. Can you imagine if we woke up tomorrow and everyone who lives in the city was a child, under 18, no mother, no father, no grandma, no grandpa, no aunts or uncles or older siblings? How would they survive? An average of 200 people die a day, and that's one person every eight minutes. So for the four lovely people who spoke for the Cherish Act in the time they spoke, that would have been another person dead. And that's only going to increase as the famine sets in. I cared for a baby who died of starvation, and it was very painful to watch. It was her pain and her parents' pain. And imagine that multiplied by thousands, because once the wasting of the body stops, and it has in northern Gaza, there's no way to reverse it. The body just eats itself from within. If the aid workers are no longer giving food aid, how will the people eat? The last functioning hospital was bombarded this week. How can it be repaired if the bombing continues? A ceasefire is needed. Is ceasefire enough? No, it's not. But it's a necessary first step for a lasting peace. When George Floyd was being killed by the police officer, he didn't start with a discussion on dismantling racism. He said, "I can't breathe." Ceasefire now, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Neil Brick. I live in East Hampton. I've been here about 27 years, since I'm going to take a different--
Can you please repeat your name?
My name is Neil Brick, B-R-I-C-K.
Thank you.
I'll say where I live. I don't have to be afraid. I have a different perspective. I'm Jewish also. I live at 39 Ward. Been here about 27 years, but I've been connected to this community about 50 years. I'm all for peace. I think peace is important. But at the same time, a ceasefire has to be just for all. You know, nobody wants war. The reality is Hamas started the war, and the reality is everywhere Israel's been it has been started by a country around them. The major problem with Palestine right now, the reality is is that Hamas's leaders are all billionaires. They're hiding in Qatar right now in expensive hotels. And that's why that coverage, one major reason that country's suffering so bad. They spent about $1 billion collecting arms and creating tunnels under the country so that they could attack Israel, et cetera. It's not a democracy. They haven't allowed elections since they got in, and they basically killed the opposition after they got in. I think they won 44 to 41% over Fatah at that time. And Israel, I mean, I grew up knowing that Israel was all we had. You know, and the United States is a great place. I love this country. But if it does turn against the Jews, Israel is all we have. So whatever ceasefire, peace agreement comes up, we have to make sure that Israel is a safe place also for people. The reality is in 1948, the Palestinians had the chance to have half the country or more, and all the Arab land, basically Israel was given all of the Sinai, pretty much and some of the coast. The Palestinians said no, and all the countries in the world attacked Israel all at once. Israel miraculously survived with no air force, nothing, and it's a true miracle. I think whatever we do here today, I mean, no one likes war. A ceasefire has to be just, and that's the biggest thing, fear for all. I think Hamas has to leave. They basically treat women as second-class innocents, and if you're gay, and I'm part of the LGBT community, they treat them horribly. They kill them sometimes, and that's the reality. So I hope that whatever you pass today, you will consider both sides of the issue and making sure Israel is safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Gamber, and I live on Briggs Street in East Hampton. I am an East Hampton resident. While I am not Jewish, more than half of my family is Jewish, and I also have family living in Israel. While I don't think that these identities and relationships qualify me to have an opinion, it does seem to carry some weight in this discussion. I resent that the presumed feeling of safety of my relatives is being used to kill Palestinian civilians. Depending on who you ask, the rate or the comparison of civilians killed is from 10 Palestinians to one Israeli to over 30. This is not a war. These are not the casualty numbers of a war. This is killing with American dollars aimed and shot by the Israeli military. Now, I and many people here abhor what Israel is doing, but I want to highlight that the ceasefire resolution that is in front of you is a bilateral ceasefire. It calls for Hamas and Israel to stop. It calls for the return of the hostages and any prisoners of war. So I urge the city councilors to consider the actual wording of the resolution. Do not be swayed by anyone who claims to speak for a whole community or an identity group. I urge the council to add our voices to the other cities and towns in Massachusetts and across the country in this effort for peace. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to put a pause now for our public speak time. It's 6:20. We scheduled a public hearing at 6:15. And we have employees. They're going to participate in a presentation. For respect of them, whoever showed up for the public hearing, we're going to put a pause. We're going to do the public hearing, and then it will open again, the public speak time. I would take a motion to open the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Zerret.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was an item brought forward to us by the Department of Public Works, the director and one of the engineers. Essentially, this is a request to make a few of the streets over in Precinct 2 just as you cross over the pond, coming from the mills, to make them one-way. The main street that we are discussing is Emerald Place, but there's also a request to make Clinton Street one-way, and that has to do mostly with traffic flow. Emerald Place is on a slope leading down to the pond, and there's significant improvements that are needed there to mitigate the potential for erosion. In order to do that, curbing needs to be installed, and if we want to also include pedestrian-friendly infrastructure there, that basically narrows the street as well as creating green space and parking. So in order to maintain traffic flow with what's left, the request is to create a one-way on Emerald Place, and then Clinton Street to create kind of a circular motion around the neighborhood portion as you head closer to, I believe that's Everett Street. We discussed this in public safety. The two regular members of the committee were not present, and so you filled in. Thank you. We approved this 2-0 to recommend to the full city council. I asked the other members if they had any concerns, and we offered a variety of options. They expressed no concerns. It's pretty straightforward, and generally, the consensus was that when the DPW director and an engineer brings forward a plan like this, they're the experts, and we didn't really have significant questions. This will open up a significant pedestrian and possibly some bicycle access better into Precinct 2, as well as, again, protecting that hillside and improving traffic flow. So I don't have much else to say. I know that-- I believe that the DPW director and one of our city engineers is on the call, and at your discretion, Mr. President, they can provide more information.
Mr. Nodeman?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Greg Nodeman, Director of Public Works. Yeah, Owen pretty much covered it. We're working on a design over in this section of New City to try to address a few issues, one of the major ones being erosion of the bank and just some troubles we're having with sections of Emerald Place starting to kind of slop off towards the pond. So that being said, I'll kind of give it to Diane there. Diane, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit? We just don't have a ton of real estate to work with, so making the upper half of Emerald Place one-way just gives us a little bit more space to make stronger improvements, basically.
Yeah, basically, we're suggesting to have Emerald Place be one-way going north, starting at Lincoln Street, which is where it really narrows down. Right now, there's no curbing in there, and to address the drainage problems, we're proposing to add curbing, so that won't allow people to park or even get over if someone's driving by on the road. So we are suggesting to make that one-way.
And we need the-- sorry, Omar. We need the city council to approve this so that we can move a design forward.
Yeah, this would not go into effect until after any construction happened and any of the necessary signage is up.
Thank you.
This could be two to three years.
Yeah. Counselor Zerret, have some details?
The only other thing I'll add to, my understanding is that this was presented to members of the neighborhood. I think only one person had a concern about it. Some of the designs, I'll also add, potentially include some of the upgrade plans farther down towards the Ferry Street development, where one has to cross the street and then cross the street again, either as a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And there could be potential with these plans to build a shorter bridge over that final span there as you come down the new promenade, boardwalk on the Ferry Street side to the pond. That's pretty much it from my perspective, Mr. President.
Okay. And any consulars have any questions or comments? No? Anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns about this? Seeing none. Counselor Zerret.
Thank you, Mr.--
Including the at-home?
Public, yeah. I say public.
Okay. Usually you say here or--
No, thank you.
And then refer to the other--
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public participating in person or remote? Who want to participate in this discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Zerret.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion as follows. I move to amend Section 1-41 of the Traffic Rules and Orders. Appendix A of the city ordinance is updated August 2nd, 2023 by adding the following language: Clinton Street for the entire distance from the westerly border of Lincoln Street to the southerly border of Emerald Place, with vehicular traffic to proceed in a westerly to northerly direction. Emerald Place from the easterly border of Emerald Place and Clinton Street to the westerly border of Lincoln Street, with vehicular traffic to proceed in an easterly direction. And Emerald Place from the northerly border of Clinton Street to the southerly border of Lincoln Street, with traffic to proceed in a northerly direction. It is proposed that the above amendment go into effect following the reconstruction of the roadways and addition of necessary signage and traffic controls deemed sufficient by the DPW and other city departments. Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend city ordinance Appendix A, Traffic Rules and Order, Article 6, Section 141, by adding Clinton Street and Emerald Street to the list of one-way streets. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Move to close the public hearings. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussions? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Against abstention? Motion passes. Now going back to the public speak time. For those one who didn't say anything yet, this is your opportunity to address your comments to the council.
Evening. My name is Sarah Weinberger, and I live at 359 Main Street in East Hampton. I would first like to extend my deepest thanks to the members of the Rules Committee who unanimously approved our people's resolution with no amendments, moving to the full city council for consideration today. And I would also like to thank Consularies Denham and Gomez for co-sponsoring our resolution. Although some would refer to the idea of a ceasefire resolution as anti-Semitic and anti-Israel, the main reason I support this resolution is because I am Jewish, and I work hard to live my life according to the Jewish principle that saving a life takes precedence over almost every other religious act or consideration. Judaism has also taught me that we must treat strangers with kindness and love them as ourselves, whether they live in East Hampton, Israel, Gaza, or the West Bank. This commandment is mentioned 36 times, more than any other commandment is mentioned or prohibition in the Torah. A bilateral ceasefire provides an opportunity, as it did in November, to stop the slaughter of the civilian population of Gaza, as well as opening the door to saving what are left of the hostages captured by Hamas on October 7th. Had a ceasefire been in effect, we would not be mourning World Central Kitchen's seven aid workers and the other approximately 200 aid workers killed in Gaza since the war began. On Sunday, tens of thousands of Israelis took to the streets for four days to demand a ceasefire and the ouster of Prime Minister Netanyahu. a ceasefire and the ouster of Prime Minister Netanyahu. My Jewish Israeli friends and family members want this war to end. They know with each passing day, the chances of rescuing the hostages alive is diminished. They also know that war only begets more war. I belong, can I just say this one thing? I stand together with Jews all over the world in condemnation of the most destructive, hateful, and right-wing administration in the history of Israel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mordechai Kamal. I'm a physician, and I'm a resident of Main Street in East Hampton. I rise to urge you to pass the community-created resolution supporting a ceasefire in the Israel-Gaza war. I'm Jewish, and my parents were Holocaust survivors. You'll hear that this resolution and others will make an increase in antisemitism. And to those who make this claim, I say that's a lie. Antisemitism, Islamophobia, and racism has been increasing in this country for at least the last seven or eight years. We've watched it from Charleston, we've watched it all over the country. We had a Muslim ban, we're about to get another, probably. There are thousands of Israelis demonstrating in front of the parliament in Jerusalem, and there have been thousands that have marched every day. The American taxpayer is funding this war, and as such, we have an obligation to demand that our federal government hold the government of Israel to the Geneva Conventions and the laws of the U.S., both of which the government of Israel is currently violating. This war is gonna end. They all do, and it'll end with a ceasefire. And the question that we have to ask ourselves is, how many Israelis and Palestinians have to die before this inevitable ceasefire happens? And will we support a resolution to push our government towards it?
Hello, Ruth Jensen, 28 East Maple Street, East Hampton. I speak as a longtime resident of Precinct Two. I'm also an educator and a member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the largest union in the state, which passed a ceasefire resolution. And I am a member of the Executive Board of the Western Mass Area Labor Federation, which represents over 60,000 workers. The delegate body of the Federation comprised of representatives of the Federation affiliate unions across Western Mass also passed a ceasefire resolution unanimously. Our unions and labor bodies represent the profound diversity of working people. We are comprised of all racial, sexual, ethnic, and gender identities. We are immigrants, differently abled, and multi-denominational. Our Western Mass labor bodies have asserted our unity on the need for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. As working people, we stand for peace and reject our wages funding war and genocide. We call on the council to join us in supporting these values. Our demands for a ceasefire and lifting the seas on Gaza have broader support than ever. In addition to the MTA, SEIU, the UAW, the American Postal Workers Union, and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, among others, have called for a ceasefire. Every single one of these unions counts many East Hampton residents among its numbers. I am also a commissioner on the Board of the East Hampton Housing Authority. I occupy the seat reserved for labor. In this capacity, I'm witness to the underfunding of housing for our low-income seniors, families, and disabled fellow community members. As our resolution notes in fiscal year 2023, East Hampton taxes contributed $154,134 to Israeli military operations. These monies are directed away from the upkeep and maintenance to house our fellow community members, many retired workers, in dignity. I ask for the council to stand with the labor movement in East Hampton and the working people of East Hampton in our call for a ceasefire. Please pass this resolution unamended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Mara Dodge, Precinct Four. I teach U.S. History at Westfield State. I also support the Cherish Act, but that's not why I'm up here now. So I'm here to clear up some misperceptions. Calling for a ceasefire is not condoning or supporting Hamas. More than 600 Jewish rabbis have signed either the Rabbis for Ceasefire Declaration or a letter from TRUA, a rabbinic human rights organization. On Easter Sunday, the Pope himself repeated his call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Calling for a ceasefire is the only way to achieve the release of the hostages. Calling for a ceasefire is essential for the safe delivery of humanitarian aid and to prevent the spread of famine that all U.N. agencies are now warning about. All week, tens of thousands of Israeli Jews, including the families of many hostages, have been calling for a ceasefire and marching in Tel Aviv. Calling for a ceasefire is not anti-Semitic. How can peace be anti-Semitic? What country can be above criticism? Many East Hampton Jews have testified in favor of this resolution or signed the petition. I am Jewish. In 1905, my great-grandparents fled massacres in Ukraine, others later died in German concentration camps. On my Polish side, 3 million Polish Jews were killed in World War II, but 3 million Polish Catholics also perished. Poles, Russians, and all Slavic peoples were next on Hitler's death list. Never again must mean never again for anyone. I've been to Israel and the West Bank. There are roads that only Jews can drive on, neighborhoods where only Jews can live. Within Israel, Palestinians are second-class citizens. Imagine, the Gaza Strip is only 25 miles long, the distance from East Hampton to Greenfield, and seven miles wide. 2 million people live there. 100,000 have been killed, wounded, and/or missing. Reputable human rights groups stand behind these figures. Israel itself reported that it dropped 100 bombs a day during the first weeks of the war. President Biden just gave another huge shipment of 2,000-pound bombs, the kind that destroy whole city blocks, and he's asking for 18 billion more. This is sheer madness. Please support this resolution unamended. Thank you.
Hi there, Frank Roberts. I live at 7 Fox Run in East Hampton. Like many of the people in this room here, I support a ceasefire. Unlike many of them, I do not support passing this resolution as it's currently written. I'm a member of two synagogues in the valley. I'm on the Board of two different Jewish organizations. My kids go to Jewish day school. I heard in the committee meeting that this was a broad process that incorporated a lot of different viewpoints. Nobody asked me. Nobody asked me, couldn't have, they probably could have found me because they didn't agree or wouldn't have agreed with my standpoint. Any resolution needs to be measured, and the current one as drafted does not build consensus. In the original committee meeting, you heard from many people who disagreed with the wording and suggested alternatives. And I'm not sure that that was heard, but the way I feel about it is pretty straightforward. Everybody here wants to be a role model. We want to be activists. We want to make our voice heard, and we want to make this community better. And so I would ask the committee, what kind of role models do you want to be? Do you want to be the type of role models that pass a resolution that really hasn't been properly vetted, that didn't build consensus, and wasn't broad in its viewpoints? Or do you want to engage in a process that maybe takes a little longer but incorporates all viewpoints? That's what I hope for, because I think we all want a ceasefire. We see the atrocities, but I still think the work isn't done, and I think that you need to get more consensus on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, Precinct Four. Poetry has been a part of our group's process. We start meetings by reading a poem. We read poems by Israeli and Palestinian combatants for peace, American Palestinian and Jewish poets, as well as living Palestinian poets and those killed by bombs, probably U.S.-funded, since October 7. These Palestinian poets have inspired us to imagine what kind of resolution they might write. Palestinian poets write a resolution, a ceasefire canto. Whereas, the house next door no longer stands. It's lying like an old carpet on the floor of the earth, trampled by missiles, fat slippers flying off legless feet. And whereas, every time we leave the house, it's suicide, and each return a failed attempt. And whereas, a child who was shot by an Israeli sniper or killed during an air raid en route to school, her picture was placed on her desk at school. Her picture stares at the blackboard while air sits in her chair. And whereas, more missiles come flying in on the lookout for anything that moves. Angels get hold of an infant niece. We look around and find only her milk bottle. And whereas, the grieving have only the unknown. It's their only staple and inheritance. Pain has no logic. All things redeem the grieving except irrational questions. And whereas, for us, the fear of dying before living haunts us while we are still in our mother's wombs. And whereas, the house has been bombed, everyone dead, the kids, the parents, the toys, the actors on TV, characters and novels, personas and poetry collections, the I, the he, and the she. And whereas, the houses were not Hamas, the kids were not Hamas, their clothes and toys were not Hamas, the neighborhood was not Hamas, the air was not Hamas, our ears were not Hamas, our eyes were not Hamas.
Hi, Rachel Rosenkerrl, Pleasant Street, East Hampton. Another Jewish person for ceasefire. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the poets, grant you refuge in invocation and prayer. We bless the neighborhood at the minaret to guard them from the rocket from the moment it is a general's command until it becomes a raid. We grant you and the little ones refuge, the little ones who change the rocket's course before it lands with their smiles. Be it further resolved that knives may eat what remains of our ribs, machines might smash what remains of stones, but life is coming for that is its way, creating life even for us. Be it further resolved that justice is the right of all who live in the wrong places in this world. Ultimately, be it resolved that death goes home alone, safe and sound, so a dove might build its nest and lay its eggs in metal helmets. These lines were gathered by Carolyn Cushing from the following Palestinian poets. Award-winning poet and scholar Musab Abu Toa, from The Things You May Find Hidden in My Ear. His and his family's perilous journey out of Gaza is detailed in a recent New Yorker article. Novelist, poet, and storyteller Maya Abu Al Hayat, from You Can Be the Last Leaf. Poet, novelist, and nutritionist Hiba Abu Nada, from I Grant You Refuge, which was written just 10 days before she was killed in an Israeli airstrike on October 20. She was only 32 years old. From Life by Saleem An-Nafar, renowned poet who advocated for peaceful resistance. He was buried along with his family under the rubble after an Israeli airstrike on December 7. And from Mural by Mahmoud Darwish, who is regarded as Palestine's national poet. My friends, we have the power to help grant refuge to those suffering in Palestine and in Israel. Please pass our ceasefire resolution as written. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Jensen. I live in Ward Three. And I want to talk to you not about why there should be a ceasefire, because I feel like many people in this room will do an excellent job, and I think that most of you know why there should be a ceasefire, but I feel like a few of you need talking to about why it is we, East Hampton, should pass something that is internationally involved. This resolution is happening at a historic moment. A genocide is happening in our lifetime. Our country is sitting silent. It's not doing anything. Every voice right now matters. And it might seem like this board doesn't have, or this council doesn't have any business being a part of this international conversation, but you do. Every voice counts right now. We need to do all we can to get the message out there. And also, I would really like it to be unchanged, because the citizens that elected you, a lot of them, this group, worked tirelessly to word this resolution, and they did an excellent job. And I don't think that it needs to be changed in the least. I think that the right thing to do would be, as elected officials, to do what your citizens are asking of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors. Heather Deirdre, 41 South Street. As a Jew, I'm actually only reading part of what I have. I don't do public speaking, so I'm lucky if I get half of this out. As a Jew, I am here today to urge you to carefully weigh the pros and cons of passing a sustained, permanent ceasefire resolution, and how that will impact all of the residents of East Hampton. Most of us would prefer our city council to focus on what they were elected to do, which is to address local matters, not foreign policy issues. We can all agree that the war in Gaza must end, but disagree with the loud minority demanding a permanent ceasefire at all costs. Like the vast majority of the American people, we want a lasting ceasefire where the hostages are returned to their families and the terrorist group Hamas is fully dismantled. Hamas has once again rejected the proposed six-week ceasefire deal that Israel has agreed to, which would allow Israel to facilitate more aid to come into Gaza and the release of hostages, who are women, children, elderly, or sick. Hamas is rejecting the latest ceasefire because they think that the more people in Gaza suffer, the more the world will pressure Israel, which they hope to destroy completely. If you still feel compelled to pass a ceasefire resolution, then we urge you to consider amending the language to instead include a mutual and temporary humanitarian ceasefire with language that is balanced and reflective of both the unbiased facts of the current situation and the full spectrum of perspective from all of your constituents. If you must pass a ceasefire resolution... Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Hostetter. I live at 26 T Berry Lane in East Hampton. I'm a member of Pax Christi International and represent them at the United Nations. Before moving to East Hampton a year ago, I directed the Mennonite Central Committee United Nations Office in New York for more than a decade, and co-chaired the Israel-Palestine NGO Working Group at the U.N. Mennonites are a peace church, and their members do not participate in war. But Mennonites have always done relief and development work, aiding the victims of poverty and war, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, or nationality. As Director of the Mennonite Central Committee U.N. Office, I had many occasions to visit Israel and Palestine. And on those visits, I visited with the organizations that the Mennonite Central Committee supported in Israel and Palestine. One of the organizations that we worked with was called Al Naj Development Forum, who had headquarters in Gaza City. And with Mennonite support, Al Naj helped families in Gaza develop home gardens and raise rabbits and chickens. I kept in touch with a couple of the Al Naj staff people over the years after I left. After the horrendous Hamas attack in October 7 and the Israeli massive bombings that response, I soon learned that the building that it housed, Al Naj, was completely destroyed. One of my friends there was killed in the bombing, but the second, Amgod, who had worked there for more than 17 years, has kept in touch with me over the years. Amgod lost his home in the early weeks of the bombing and moved his family over a dozen times to homes of friends, relatives, school buildings, hospitals, in a futile attempt to find a safe place for his wife and two children.
Thank you.
He emailed me this yesterday and asked me to ask you to please stop the war...
Thank you.
...and allow humanitarian aid.
Thank you.
Kay Collins, 4 Carolav, East Hampton. Clarity via definition to wit. One can disagree on the actions of a ruling body without hating those that it rules. I was raised and educated in the Catholic Church. I virulently disagree with its political sway, the harm that it's done to people I love. And yet, I love my Catholic friends and family. Homophobia is defined as the irrational fear of, aversion to, or discrimination against homosexuality or LGBTQIA+ people. Counselor Denham, myself, and a number of others who worked on this... Counselor Denham, myself and a number of others who worked on this resolution fall within that spectrum. Disagreeing with us on this issue does not make one inherently homophobic. We can virulently disagree with the decision of the US government to use our tax dollars to supply bombs to the government of Israel and still hold love for the Americans in this room. Anti-Semitism is defined as hostility toward or discrimination against Jews as a religious, ethnic or racial group. Being in opposition to the policies and harm of the Israeli government and the harm that they have caused to the people of Gaza does not mean that I cannot love my Jewish family, friends and community members. Let us not deal today in false equivalencies. The definition of genocide is the deliberate and systemic destruction of a racial, political or cultural group. The definition of exterminate is to get rid of completely, usually by killing off. The most impactful moment of my Catholic school education was my seventh grade book report on the Holocaust and the letters and poems from the children's camp. My six-year-old niece is Jewish. I hold boundless love for her. I have boundless love for the children of Gaza. Never forget. Never forget. Never forget.
Thank you. Anyone else before I go remote?
Hi, Danielle O'Bannon, Precinct Three. I stand here in unquestioning support for the ceasefire resolution to be passed as written by the community in tonight's city council meeting. I'm watching Israel be so indiscriminate in its killing machine that it killed three Israeli hostages on sight who were holding white flags. An Israeli hostage has died of starvation. I fail to see how Israel cares even a modicum about its hostages when it is bombing humanitarian workers and carpet bombing the entire strip of Gaza. I only want to leave you with the words today of Dr. Tanya Hajhassan, a pediatric intensive care doctor with Doctors Without Borders, in the wake of the destruction of Gaza and hospitals. Quote, "I am just shocked that we are still having this conversation about Hamas. The IDF executed tens of people point blank, including one of my colleagues, Dr. Ahmed Khalidati, who is a very experienced plastic surgeon, and they executed his mother, who is also a physician. They executed people point blank, including many of our colleagues who have been detained now. We haven't heard back from them. Previous students of mine, detained, young doctors, detained. We don't know if they're dead or alive. They've been gone for over 100 days. So to say this is a strategic targeting of Hamas is an insult to our intellect and to our humanity. This is a destruction of people who heal. This is a direct targeting of healthcare workers. I just want to paint a very brief picture of what healthcare workers are telling me. They're saying that when they leave the hospital, civilians give them civilian clothing, because wearing scrubs is like wearing a target on their back." That is systematically, healthcare has been targeted. And frankly, in the last 24 hours, what we have seen from Al Shifa Hospital and Al Aqsa Hospital, what I worry is that it's coming to all of the remaining hospitals of the Gaza Strip, because it has been the pattern and we will not ignore it. It is a direct and systematic targeting of healthcare that is unjustifiable. As a physician, I'm asking you to pass this resolution as is without question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for listening this evening. I did want to agree that the cherish act seems like a good thing. I'm Chelsea Council. I'm from Ward Three and I live on Adams Street. But also, I do think that history will look back on the genocide of Palestinians and consider it one of the greatest travesties of the 21st century. There are so many dead, and it really is, as other people have said, a systemic process, you know, going after hospitals, going after people, bringing in aid, going after people who can help people, whether those are journalists or physicians. So I would like to ask you to please, as one of your constituents, pass this ceasefire. I do not approve of my taxes being used to bomb other people. That's not me. So yes, please pass the ceasefire as it is written. I think that the people who worked on it did a really intellectual, beautiful, compassionate job, and I praise the work that they did. Also, just another note, I think that America has a very serious problem with Islamophobia. I keep hearing on the news and everything, you know, oh, 2/3 of the people who have died are women and children. I just want to point out that everyone who's died that's a civilian, men included, young men, old men, very important, these are just people. They're people in Palestine who are living normal lives like you and I. They go to their job, they feed their children, they buy gifts for their friends, they make dinner with each other. Normal people doing normal things. And the Israeli government hates that they exist and wants them gone so that they can commandeer their land like they did in the Third Reich, taking it from Jewish people. And they want to take that living space and give it to their community, because they're trying to, the government in Israel is trying to create an ethnic state. And not even the people of Israel, the civilians there, think that what they're doing is necessarily right. It's just that there are such intense sanctions against them that they are very frequently worried about their health and safety to speak out on that matter. So again, please pass the ceasefire resolution.
I'm Mark Kenneth. I live on Pleasant Street in East Hampton. That year behind you all, 1785, we're almost 250 years later. And unfortunately, we Americans have developed coping mechanisms to evade seeing fully what the unfurling of our colonial project was and is. But it happens that in extension of our neo-colonial activities, the Zionist state is very blatantly in the throes of their 76 years' process of dividing, conquering, murdering and expelling millions of indigenous people. That modern colonial project, when you actually explore the correct histories and have the chance to behold it in action, it breaks the hearts and ignites the rightful indignation of good people. As I mentioned last week, I lived in the West Bank for almost eight years. My Jewish and gay identity never questioned or threatened by Palestinians I knew. And one thing I learned is how crucial empirical learning is to see with one's own eyes. I'm not talking about the trip that Israel's tourism ministry has carefully plotted out to the no Palestinians allowed partying in Tel Aviv or the culinary scene of West Jerusalem. I'm speaking of places like East Jerusalem, where from 1967 to 2018, Israel deported 14,500 Palestinians. One of them was my neighbor in Ramallah, Nabeel, who was scared that if he left the city, the soldiers would arrest and expel him to Jordan. Those 14,000 Jerusalemites were replaced by 250,000 illegal settlers, part of Israel's overtly expressed goal of 70% Jews, 30% Arabs in Jerusalem, ethnic engineering through displacement. That's what Israel is fast-tracking now by driving the population of Gaza into Rafah, where they await an invasion which will likely eradicate large numbers of them through continued usage of white phosphorus, 2,000-pound bombs or forced expulsion, all war crimes. In these two speeches, I might have mentioned beaches and roads segregated by race, a Roman empire as colonial subjugation, the medieval siege of Gaza. So I ask then, are we a progressive town or do we reject these very anachronistic crimes? Are we just another town that doesn't engage with the swell of justice-minded voices? The author Alice Walker said that after her visit to Palestine that it's worse than the Jim Crow segregation she grew up in. Archbishop Desmond Tudu said the apartheid in Palestine is worse than his own was in South Africa. A 2021 poll by Jewish electorate found that 30-- Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Welsh. I live on Golf Street in East Hampton. I am Jewish and along with the growing majority of Americans, which is over 60% of the population, is horrified with the continuous violence committed in Gaza with weapons funded by our own tax dollars. We stand as a group of nearly 400 residents of East Hampton with a diverse background, age, religion and experience to ask the council to make a statement to our state and federal government that we do not support the continued genocide of Palestinian lives. Every hour, 15 people died, are dying, including six children, and 42 bombs are dropped every hour. This is not a war. Since the Rules Committee meeting last week, we have seen over 400 civilian people bombed and tortured at Al Shifa Hospital, along with a deliberate attack on humanitarian aid workers. The minimum at this point we can do is ask for a permanent ceasefire. I ask you to support what your constituents have written with their own vast knowledge and diverse perspective to pass the people's resolution unamended. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going remote.
Thank you. I've got two minutes, right? Yes, okay, give me. Go. I'm an East Hampton resident. I've been an East Hampton resident. I live in 20 East Maple Street, Ward Two. East Hampton resident and taxpayer of 16 years now. 16 years, it's a long time. I also teach at UMass Amherst. It's been 18 years. I'm a member of the MTA and Massachusetts Teachers Association, the largest union in the state, 115,000 rank-and-file union members, 400 locals. This is pre-K through 12, through community colleges, through higher education, public universities like the University of Massachusetts. Both the MTA and the Western Mass Area Labor Federation have passed this resolution, filled with care workers, teachers, focusing in our process, fully democratic, fully transparent, unanimous votes in support of ceasefire. They were, in the discussion, they were focusing on the fact that over half the population of Gaza are children. Children being killed, no connection to the attacks of October 7th. Children, bombs falling on them continually, orphaned. So, but we followed the East Hampton Ceasefire Resolution Group, the coalition, the broad, diverse coalition. We followed the same democratic process that's being followed across this country, cities, towns, labor unions, across this country. The largest labor unions in this country have passed the ceasefire resolution. Join us in passing the ceasefire resolution unamended. Over six weeks now, we've worked on this language, drawing in different views, different views from across the spectrum, from across the spectrum. So in joining us in following this, I want to thank the counselors who have brought this forward, Omar Gomez, Connie Denham, and I also want to thank the Rules Committee, who did not only forward this for the full city council vote, but they recommended that you pass it. So let's remember that, that following the democratic process, the will of the people, why we are implicated, the US government paid $3.8 billion unconditional aid. This is going to the military, killing children. Our taxpayer dollars going to this genocidal war. How does peace begin? Ceasefire, de-escalation. Thank you. Please pass this resolution.
Janie Thurber, 8 Cranberry Lane here in East Hampton. I feel everybody is passionately about passing the ceasefire now, as the previous people did who spoke. I want to remind you of, I think, the very first Rules Committee meeting where one of the ceasefire now pro people got up and said, "Do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. If you think there are imperfections or things that need to be added, you at least are admitting that it should be done now, that we need a ceasefire now." If that's the case, then do not let you are perfectionists, or it should be this, or the reality is this. Do we really know everybody's individual realities? We have tried, this group of people have tried very hard to incorporate other people's voices and opinions, and we think we have, and we think you all must agree, this war must stop, and now.
Thank you. Who else? I'm going to ask to please, if someone's going to speak to the council, be ready, because we have people waiting on line two. So if you're planning to say something, be ready to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. I'll keep it pretty short. My name is Jishva. I live in Precinct Two on Lincoln Street. And I just want to reiterate what many people have talked about already today, in the last two Rules Committee meetings and in the last city council meeting, which is that there are so many people here on very different parts of the political spectrum who have come together week after week to be in conversation with each other. We have also invited conversation with several of you and have been really committed to being part of that dialogue across lots of lines of difference. And that has been one of the things that I have admired so much about this group and the ways that we have not only come to this very specific language, but have revisited it multiple times to make sure that we are still in alignment, have spent hours upon hours making sure that we are asking each other questions, asking for clarification, building deeper understanding, and coming back to the same agreement that this language represents all of us. And so many others who were not necessarily part of those conversations, but have signed on, hundreds of East Hampton residents who are not here in this room or on that Google Meet right now, also support this. So I just want to say that to make sure that you all understand that even though, and I think this was JT, you said this at the last Rules Committee meeting, but these conversations, these resolutions will never ensure that everybody gets what they want, but this is the widest swath of language that will cover the most number of people. And I just want us to really ground in that as you all go into deliberation tonight. Thank you, and please pass this unamended.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Sandler. I'm Melissa Neve. I'm a long-term East Hampton resident, not as long-term as some. I've been here about 12 years. I'm also a Jew. And I'm also here to urge you to pass this resolution as it stands. But I want to talk, you've heard all the reasons why. I don't have any new reasons. I want to talk a little bit about what I think of as your job and what I think of as our job. I really admire local leadership, and I think you are here because you have agreed to serve, and it's a serious job. And you have to listen to all of us on every issue, every week, and in your email boxes, and it's a lot. And your job is to listen, and your job is to follow. I think that the most important kind of leadership, and I consider myself a leader in many ways, is to be able to follow people when they're going, when they're doing their work, right? That's what democracy is. It is actually about following the people. And it's also about following your conscience. And I urge you here not to follow your fear, but to follow your courage, to follow your heart. One can't say that we are all for peace and then vote against a ceasefire if one knows what is going on. I don't want to be looking at the media that I'm looking at every day, and I look at it every day. I mean, I follow people who are there, on the ground, and it is hard on my heart, right? It would be easier not to. But this is our war, and this is our genocide, and we have one, we have very little power in it. We can't solve all the problems of the Middle East. Nobody is asking you to do that. But we can say no. When we see things and we know that the answer is no to what is happening, the answer is stop to what is happening. We don't have to know all the right answers to be able to say that. Please pass this resolution unamended.
Hello, everyone. My name is Asher Swank. I live on Adams Street in East Hampton. I'm just here to add my voice to say, yes, we should pass this ceasefire resolution as written, unamended, as soon as possible. And when you see events like several other speakers have made reference to of the World Central Kitchen having been struck, not once, not twice, but three times in this instance. You know, they fled the first car struck by a drone, went to another car that struck by a drone, flee to the third car that struck by a drone. And my idea, these cars are explicitly marked on the top because they know this is a possibility. As other speakers have also mentioned, you know, they were in contact with the military. I mean, this kind of behavior needs to be stopped immediately. We don't have time to do an endless regression into language to talk to every one of the 16,000 people who live in East Hampton to get their opinion. What we need is action right now. Every one of the people, I mean, the seven victims of the Israeli military, this is a huge tragedy, but we have to keep in mind that every person, every one of the 30,000-plus by the last estimate, which is surely an undercount, are deserving of our empathy. So instead of waffling about language, I encourage you to pass the resolution now that's been crafted by a diverse group of East Hampton residents who represent the community. that's been crafted by a diverse group of East Hampton residents who represent the community. I encourage you, please pass it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margot. I live on Lincoln Street. I also support the Cherish Act, but I am here to support the ceasefire resolution. I support it unchanged as is, as people have said. There's been a lot of work that has gone into the ceasefire resolution, and there are people from across the political spectrum who have put their ideas into this ceasefire resolution, and it, it is very good as is. It is, it calls for a bilateral ceasefire, the return of hostages, and everyone has said what you need to hear about why a ceasefire resolution is important. It is, it is atrocious what has happened in Gaza. Over 35,000 people have been killed. It's very dangerous for a country like Israel to be committing a genocide, it is setting, and not having repercussions against it. It is setting the precedent for genocides to keep happening. So, just, just think about that. If Israel is allowed to commit this genocide, and the US will do nothing about it, and they'll continue to send arms to Israel, what does that say about what can happen in the international community? It is very dangerous, and we are likely going to see wars of immense scale. It's, it's a very dangerous precedent, and it is important for East Hampton to put their voice and let our local elected officials know that we support a ceasefire and we do not, we will not allow genocide to happen. You know, apartheid in South Africa did not end overnight. It was a multi-pronged activist approach from all, all sides, local politics, state politics, boycotts, divestments. We have to attack this issue from all angles, and it is important for people's voice to be heard. I support the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janelle Tryon. I live in Precinct 4. I've been a resident for almost two years now. I had no intention of speaking today, because my comrades here have done such an incredible job of speaking to the injustice that is happening, and the urgent call we all have to stand up to that. So, instead, I want to voice why this is a local issue. This is why this is a local issue. Your residents have spent countless hours collaborating, coordinating, talking to neighbors, having incredibly difficult conversations, up every night, all night, thinking about what is happening in our name with our tax dollars. This is a local issue, because we are your constituents, and this is on our hearts, and this is on our mind, and you have the most incredible community in front of you. I've only been here two years, and I am dedicated to staying here as long as I can because of these people. I am so impressed that they have stood together, that they have collaborated, that they have not centered their own individual politics, but they have centered this community and the community at large, and they see themselves as members of the community of the world. And so many of the residents of this community in East Hampton are directly intimately affected by the violence that's happening in Palestine. This is your community, and your community stands before you, and they are begging you with their time, with their passion, with their voices, and with their collaboration. And they do this all to make your decision very easy. Pass the ceasefire resolution unamended tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Miranda. I'm an East Hampton resident. I live on East Green Street. I want to speak in support of the ceasefire resolution, and urge you to pass it as is, without amendments. In this moment, it's the responsibility and obligation of all US residents to use every bit of power that we have any leverage over, to stand strongly against the violence in Gaza that is being perpetrated, funded, advanced, defended on the international stage by our country. And other speakers tonight have talked about some of the other terrains in which people here are leveraging that power, organized labor, swiftly passing resolutions and organizing against the violence in Gaza. As that last speaker just said, the organizing that's happening here in East Hampton, community member to community member, creating more power than just individuals coming here to speak to you. And now, it is your responsibility and obligation as city councillors to listen to the people of East Hampton and support that resolution. As a city, we have the opportunity to be part of that turning tide of dozens of other local institutions, city councils, town councils, that are speaking out and supporting a ceasefire now. For example, in Massachusetts, we have power to show our state and federal elected officials that this is something that they have to expend their political capital on, it's not something that we're going to forget about, or that Massachusetts residents are going to deprioritize when it's election time. We have the power to send a very clear message that this is a priority to the residents of East Hampton, and frankly, if the city council delays or does not use that power that they do have, that's a failure of doing the bare minimum. So, I urge you to not delay, to pass the resolution before you without amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brianna Jelly Weber. I'm an East Hampton resident. I live in Precinct 2. I'm urging you to pass the ceasefire resolution as written by the people, for all of the reasons that my fellow residents have already outlined. I also just want to add that each day that goes by where the US continues its unconditional support of a military that repeatedly breaks international laws, including US laws, each day that more civilians, more children, more aid workers, more journalists, more doctors, more human beings are being killed, we are all made less safe. So, please help us elevate our voices as we are doing what we can to speak out against this genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the people that are participating, participating remote, thank you for your patience. The rules are the same. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to talk to the council. Quirk? And I apologize if I mispronounce your name. All right, let's go to the second person. Matthew?
Hi there. I'm gonna keep this brief. Very good at public speaking. Matthew Thornton, Water Lane resident, Jewish heritage. Not that I feel like that should matter, but calling for a ceasefire is not courageous, it is the bare minimum. I want to wholeheartedly throw my voice behind those who have so eloquently spoken in support for passing the ceasefire resolution in its current form. It's been a frustrating experience to sit here and hear people nitpicking about wording as hundreds of civilians are starved and murdered every single day. This ceasefire resolution is deeply painfully obviously the moral thing to do. Please pass it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Deirdre?
Did you say Deirdre?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. I believe I fixed my audio issues. My name is Deirdre Quirk. I live on Adams Street. I was born in East Hampton, and I have many family and friends here who are not able to be here tonight, but who agree with me that this ceasefire resolution should be passed by the council as or in unamended. And I just want to say that I believe it's important specifically for the East Hampton City Council to pass this resolution. First, because our tax dollars are going towards wiping the killing of children right now, but also because we speak stronger together. You know, individually, I know many people have been making a lot of calls to our senators and representatives, but I think it makes a very strong statement when the city of East Hampton speaks together as one, to those senators and representatives to continue to push for this on a federal level. And I just want to say that it's important to pass it now, because every day that passes, more lives are lost in Gaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kat?
Hi, thank you. My name is Catherine Good Schiff, and I live on Mount Tom Avenue in Precinct 3. I'm coming to you today from my sick bed, but I wanted to let you know that I am also here to speak in favor of the resolution for a bilateral ceasefire in Gaza as soon as possible. I was horrified by what happened on October 7th to Israelis, and I've been horrified in the days that have followed by what has been happening to Palestinians in Gaza. I do not want my tax dollars sent in unconditional support of such excessive and disproportionate violence. The double billing tonight of the ceasefire resolution and the Cherish Act resolution is a perfect example of how our tax dollars could be better spent. I am a librarian at one of our Massachusetts community colleges, and I work every day with students for whom affordable public education is life-changing. Previously, I worked in a public library in Hampden County, where I frequently assisted refugees and homeless Americans with paperwork and job applications. These are just two examples of public funding put to its best and most constructive use. I reject the idea that calling for a ceasefire is anti-Semitic. I care about my Jewish friends and my Muslim friends, and I want them to live in a world where they can exist peacefully as neighbors. The systematic excessive violence and the high civilian death toll in Gaza is beyond anything that should be remotely acceptable to us. For this reason, I hope that you, our councillors, will pass the resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, as it is written and proposed by the people, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian?
Hi there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Ian Petty. I live at 7 Adams Street. Sorry I can't be there in person tonight, but didn't want to get anyone sick. Here in East Hampton, hundreds of residents have signed on to support this resolution. They have taken thousands of hours to craft it, stood in the rain to promote it, and spoken up at city council meetings to support it. Two city council members have made the effort to discuss this resolution with that movement, and I thank councillors Denham and Gomez for their support. At last week's Rules Committee meeting, possible amendments were discussed and dismissed, and the resolution was passed on to you with their recommendation. There is no other item in front of you that has anywhere near this level of support from the East Hampton community, or has undergone this serious of a deliberative process. Any adjustment, amendment, or delay is an insult to each one of these residents that have put in so much time and effort to build this resolution, and an insult to the democratic process, not to mention to the people of Gaza, for whom the stakes are not a matter of wording, but whether they live or die. Your job now is to vote on this resolution that has been brought before you, and to decide whether or not our city will stand with the more than 100 towns and cities, over 200 unions, and millions of people across this country who have united around the demand for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Elisa?
Hi, my name is Melissa Zimer. I live on East Maple Street in East Hampton, and like so many other speakers, I want to urge you to pass the people's resolution as it is presented, without amendment. I want to appreciate all of the citizens who have put in their time and energy and hearts to crafting this resolution, and all of you on the council who have engaged and supported it thus far. I'm not there in person tonight, because I'm home taking care of my kids and making dinner for them, and that feels in this moment like a privilege, and it shouldn't be a privilege to have something to feed your children. But that unfortunately is a crisis that is unfolding multiple places around the world. But what's distinctive about the crisis, the profound moral crisis and catastrophe that is unfolding in Gaza, is that the crisis is being funded by the United States with our tax dollars. And so, that is why I, I, I want to add my voice to the others who are encouraging you to say, no, not in our name. We cannot be bystanders when our government is helping to contribute to this great profound catastrophe. And so, I thank you for considering this resolution, and I urge you to support it unamended. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I apologize, I can't turn on my video, and I'm talking to you from a very noisy place, but I have something that's so important to say that I really want to say it. I live on Main Street in East Hampton, and I'm a member of the Community Relations Committee. And people have said, have talked about us not doing sufficient outreach. Well, I pride myself on my outreach, I always have, and I started the outreach on this, and I started it with a list of over 100 people that I know in East Hampton, from all kinds of situations, everything from people who work for the city, to people who work in the arts, to people on the Democratic Committee, to people who buy pierogies. And I sent it out to all of them, and all of them had a chance to come to meetings that we called, and all of them had a chance for input. But not only that, then we put it out on social media, all over the place. And then, we put it out to all of the city councillors, and we invited all of the city councillors to meet with us and talk with us. So, if anybody says that we only talk to some people, it's because they did not talk to us. And I am very proud of the people who kept getting our messages, even though they didn't come to meetings. Occasionally, they'd write and say, "Good for you, I just can't participate," and only two people ever asked to be taken off the list. And our list just kept growing and growing. So, it is not true that we only reached out to some people, and that has to be crystal clear in this discussion. We approached everybody and talked to everybody who was willing to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Action?
My name is Pilar Goldstein Day. I live on Terrace View, and I want to thank everybody who worked so hard on this ceasefire resolution, and I want to urge the council to plead, please pass it as it is. It is clearly written, and written with great care, and as a disabled person, I want to reach out to you to consider this as a mass disabling event. This is not only a genocide of life, but of limb as well. And this is our opportunity to come together and join our voices in a very unique way, to speak loudly and clearly to an administration that is ignoring the polling, that is saying most people want a ceasefire. And it's a genocide. Why wouldn't we? Thank you.
Thank you. Going back again with Action Reader? Say Action. Christian?
His mic is on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. Can you see me?
No, and we don't have to.
My, 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 is kind of poor. Anyway, Christian Action WZ Reader, 26 Chapman Ave, also the owner of Comics &amp; More for a decade now in comics in East Hampton, and also, you might know me from my Radical Care work, where I distribute free masks and PPE to the greater community for free, high-quality We can't drag our feet any longer. I take, I take global issues pretty seriously, because they matter. I've had a hard time getting people to listen to me about COVID, and COVID is rampant in the tent and open-air prison community in Palestine. I was really glad Pilar brought up this as a disabling moment, because that is a very important...
I also wanted to add one piece as a resident invested in this little city with a big heart. Passing this resolution tells our community that East Hampton does not support a security strategy whose cost is massive, massive innocent death and suffering, and that's something I want to know about the place I plan to reside and raise children in. Thank you to the city council members who have been involved in developing and moving this resolution forward, and those who have committed their support. Thank you to the East Hampton residents who wrote the resolution, those who've been organizing, and everyone who's spoken today in favor of this needed resolution. Councilors, please pass this urgent resolution as written tonight. History will remember this, as will the voters of this city.
Thank you. Kayem?
Hi, councilors. Kayem Jermar McQuade, Precinct 5, Jones Drive. I'm going to keep this brief because, one, I get very emotional talking about this because it is so absurd that we have to be at this point. I'll say this: I wear a lot of hats in East Hampton as an advocate in our community, as a student, as a budding educator, as an aspiring public servant. And the reason that I center myself in this is because there's been a question about how this is a local issue. So I'll say personally, over the past six months, seeing the devastation racked upon a civilian population of mainly children, it makes it hard to go on, knowing that, you know, I'm an independent contractor, I had to pay all my taxes in one bulk payment a couple weeks ago, knowing that a huge chunk of that money is going to send weapons to children dying. It makes it hard to go on. So I feel an incredible amount of importance in the work that this community is doing, standing in solidarity, standing up and saying no when we see something that is abhorrent. I also want to repeat the words that a few other people said tonight in saying that this resolution as written tonight is broad-based. It's the product of weeks of painstaking deliberation and collaboration and outreach from incredibly compassionate people who some of you, some of you've heard from tonight. There's no reason why we shouldn't be passing this tonight. And as you can see clearly, the numbers are in our favor. Hundreds of community members have signed on to this resolution, and dozens have shown up tonight. Please pass this.
Marie?
Hi, my name's Marie Boyer, and I live on East Street in Ward 2. I don't have anything new to say tonight, I just want to echo the voices of everybody else that's speaking out in favor of the ceasefire, and I want to urge you to pass it as written tonight. And I really hope that, as somebody else said tonight, that there's not a lot of time wasted on waffling over the wording. One argument that I keep hearing against this resolution is that it's unbalanced. That's the word people keep using, and I think that's because the war that is being waged on Palestinians is unbalanced. It's a genocide. And the ceasefire resolution as written by members of this community that you represent reflects that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise?
I am Lois Levin. I live on Hanum Brook Drive, Precinct 1. I've been a resident of East Hampton for 38 years. I'm Jewish. I have mixed feelings about how the resolution is written. Unfortunately, I don't always have a lot of time to be on social media, so I've just pretty much read through much of this resolution in the past couple of days. The biggest complaint I have about the resolution as written is where it says, whereas we call for a sustained ceasefire, I would prefer it to say for the release, I prefer it to be opposite, I wish it would say the release of all hostages and for the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza. There is never, ever going to be any resolution until those hostages are released. And as I said, I have some mixed feelings, there are some things I wish it was written differently, but that is my big comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Grazi?
Hello. I'm Grace Leclair Sinino. I live on Holyoke Street, and I want to say thank you to the council members for listening so carefully to the caring testimony of so many people of my community. I'm grateful to everyone who spoke, the few that I don't see this the same way as, and the many that I do see this the same way as. And I'm grateful that we're all here deliberating together. And I ask and pray that we will come together and pass this resolution as it stands, knowing that it is not perfect, but knowing that it speaks to our concern for the Palestinians, the Israelis, the aid workers, and everyone else who's trying to make peace and take care of people. So please pass the resolution, and thank you for listening to us all.
Thank you. All right. Communication from elected officials, boards, and committee. Any councilor have anything for tonight? Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just wake up my computer here. A couple of quick things. Citywide cleanup is coming up on May 5th, so that's just a month away, and there'll be signups distributed soon. That will be from 9 to 1 with people meeting in the 50 pacing parking lot. The newly formed BS Committee will be coordinating with this and I think eventually taking it over, and will also be using this as a way to educate people about No Mo May, which also kicks off in May, as the name would imply. Also, looking forward, the River Roads Festival will be coming back to East Hampton, and with that, the River Roads cleanup in conjunction with the Connecticut River Conservancy. We had 40 to 50 people participate last year. That will be on September 8th, so we'll have our spring cleanup and then the fall cleanup in September. Another exciting item put on and sponsored by the Healthy Youth Coalition is a Battle of the Bands that's being organized for the first time. Sounds pretty awesome. That will be on July 20th, 2024, Millside Park, and they're still accepting potential acts. So I encourage people interested in either participating, either via actually playing music or volunteering, to email itsbattleofbands, it's not Battle of the Bands, it'sbattleofbands@easthamptonma.gov. So both keeping the city a little cleaner as well as entertaining people's eardrums, and that's about it.
Thank you. Any other counselor? See none? I just...
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Smith?
I just wanted to make mention that the High School Musical is coming up, and the musical is going to be Chicago. And what's the date of the musical? Is this weekend, right? No, next weekend?
The first weekend of May.
Thank you, the first weekend of May. So just want to make sure that everyone's aware that that's coming.
Thank you. An apology, I didn't see you.
No, that's okay. I'm over here on the end.
Any other counselor?
Thanks for mentioning that. I went into trouble.
The council received the Planning Board recommendation on Sony amendments for the electronic message centers. The ordinance committee, I guess, is going to bring that to the full council pretty soon. The information is available for everybody. You can find it in our webpage, but again, the ordinance committee will be discussing and bringing it back to the full council pretty soon. We don't have any major communication tonight, any correspondence announcement for the president or vice president, we don't have any to report. Report of standing committees. Finance, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not meet last week, but we will be meeting this week to discuss this new business that we'll be introducing at that time. And, oh yes, we need to set a public hearing for that.
No, we have to extend it.
Oh, extend, yeah, 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 yeah. That's right. I'd like to ask, well, we're sort of waiting around for a while, so I'm just going to go ahead and ask for a 90-day extension on the charter required review of salaries for elected officials and appointed committees, et cetera. Second?
I have a motion and a second to extend 90 days. The charter required review of the salaries for elected officials and appointed committees. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Peak?
That concludes.
That concludes. Thank you. Public safety, Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be meeting next week, the 9th of April, in Conference Room 1 at 6:00 PM. We'll be finalizing and making sure we have full consensus on the amendments to Section 1-25, parking permits in certain streets during certain hours, and changes to amounts charged for parking violations. And there's a public hearing already set for that at our next meeting on the 17th. We'll also be, I think, finally getting to a couple items on the Ordnance Review Committee file report, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Appointments? We have a scheduled meeting for Tuesday, April 16, Rule Number 2 behind us, and I will take a motion to extend for 90 days the ongoing agenda item request for board committees vacancy review and recruitment. Abolled?
So I can get in?
I have a motion and a second to extend this item for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Ordnance, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you mentioned, we received a report from the Planning Board in regards to the electronic message center. In regards to that, the committee passed to amend Section 10, sign Subsection 10.04 to allow electronic message centers to the downtown and highway business district, 3 to 0. We'd like to set a public hearing for April 17th for that.
Second?
There was a motion?
In the form of a motion.
I have a motion and a second to set up a public hearing in this chamber, 6:15 in our next meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Denham?
We also had the opportunity to discuss the stretch code. We had Connie Dawson from the Energy Advisory Committee come in, and she gave a presentation on the opt-in to add to that, which there were really some really great points of that. One, it encourages all electronic, encourages all electric construction moving forward, requires pre-wiring for new buildings that use fossil fuels, which really is an idea to future-proof them. It aligns with Western Massachusetts Net Zero legislation. It aligns with East Hampton's Climate Emergency Resolution and Climate Action Plan, and is required for climate leader certification. And so that was some of what she had covered. So what we're doing now, moving forward, is we're going to invite the building commissioner as well as the planning department, as well as contractors to come in and discuss with us the impact of this on any future activity in the community, buildings, et cetera. And so that will be an opportunity for us to kind of dig into some of these questions about it. In terms of the moratorium, a temporary moratorium, use of sewer sledge, we're really in a research phase right now where we are looking for additional information. So we're outreach-ing to local farmers. We're looking at the aquifer production ordinance to see if there's anything in that that we can either add to or pull from. And we are actually going to be working with Counselor Kuzinski to rewrite the original proposal into a format. Currently, it's in a format of a resolution, and we've been asked by our council clerk, as well as President Gomez mentioned, writing it in the format of an ordinance. So we'll be working on that together. So those are some next steps that we have. Our next meeting is going to be April 23rd, 6:00 PM. It will be virtual, and it'll take place in Conference Room 1. And that's everything that I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor Denham? Property, Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on our agenda. That's a Verizon poll location request. We'll be meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM in Room 1 to discuss that. That will be a hybrid meeting. I did advise the utility not to make any decisions or install any infrastructure until duly notified, so that's tomorrow, Room 1 at 6:00 PM. Thank you. This concludes.
Thank you. Now we go into rules and government relations, but before taking the report from Counselor Kuzinski, I just want to be clear with the public. Be respectful. I don't know how the council is going to vote. The city council chamber should be, must be, in silence. If you interrupt the meeting in any way, I will ask you to be removed. So please respect, asking for respect the council. I know this is an important issue for a lot of people here, but again, I will ask to respect the council, and please must be in silence. Thank you. Counselor Kuzinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've heard from the public today on the subject, and we heard from the public at the Rules Committee meeting. I would say that the Rules Committee, the last Rules Committee meeting and this meeting here, the speakers were pretty much the same, although we did have a few folks have some reservations. But primarily, the majority of folks very strongly supported the ceasefire resolution. At the first meeting where we heard from all, at the full council, there were about 2/3 of the speakers who were in favor and about 1/3 who were opposed. It seems to me that those who were opposed either kind of didn't come to the last Rules Committee meeting or come here tonight to express their opinions in force. In terms of the moratorium, a temporary moratorium, use of sewer sledge, we're really in a research phase right now where we are looking for additional information. So we're outreach to local farmers. We're looking at the aquifer production ordinance to see if there's anything in that that we can either add to or pull from. And we are actually going to be working with Consul Kuzinski to rewrite the original proposal into a format. Currently, it's in a format of a resolution, and we've been asked by our council clerk, as well as President Gomez mentioned, writing it in the format of an ordinance. So we'll be working on that together. So those are some next steps that we have. Our next meeting is going to be April 23rd, 6:00 PM. It will be virtual, and it'll take place in Conference Room 1. And that's everything that I have for now.
Thank you. Consul Denham. Property, Consul Sarat.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on our agenda. That's a Verizon poll location request. We'll be meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM in Room 1 to discuss that. That will be a hybrid meeting. I did advise the utility not to make any decisions or install any infrastructure until duly notified. So that's tomorrow, Room 1 at 6:00 PM. Thank you. This concludes.
Thank you. Now we go into rules and government relations. But before taking the report from Consul Kuzinski, I just want to be clear with the Be respectful. I don't know how the council is going to vote. The city council chamber should be, must be, in silence. If you interrupt the meeting in any way, I will ask you to be removed. So please respect, asking for respect, the council. I know this is an important issue for a lot of people here, but again, I will ask to respect the council, and please must be in silence. Thank you. Consul Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we've heard from the public today on the subject, and we heard from the public at the Rules Committee meeting. I would say that the Rules Committee, the last Rules Committee meeting and this meeting here, the speakers were pretty much the same, although we did have a few folks have some reservations. But primarily, the majority of folks very strongly supported the ceasefire resolution. At the first meeting that we heard from all, at the full council, there were about two-thirds of the speakers who were in favor and about one-third who were opposed. It seems to me that those who were opposed either kind of didn't come to the last Rules Committee meeting or come here tonight to express their opinions in force, for whatever reason. I don't believe it's through intimidation. I think this community has been very, very open and hoping to be safe for everyone. That being said, the Rules Committee did vote 3 to 0 in full support of the resolution as written and bringing it to this full council. Although there may be certain tweaks, as expressed tonight, in order to make this a perfect resolution, I'm not sure that a war is a perfect scenario. I don't know where it stops. I don't know where we draw the line in participating in a civil process as best as possible when it comes to war. I know that dropping a nuclear bomb is not something I believe that anyone in this room would support. The murder of civilians as occurred in Israel on October 7th, like dropping a tactical nuclear weapon? I think so. It didn't go after soldiers. It didn't go after governments. It went after people. It was horrific. It was the precursor to what Israel is doing in the invasion of the Gaza Strip. One of the concerns that was discussed at the meetings and the process, and I've heard from folks who would prefer not to have a resolution, is that the numbers were incorrect. The numbers can't be trusted, that they come from the Gaza Ministry of Health. That can be disputed, go back and forth. But when you look at numbers, does it really matter whether it's 30,000 or 20,000 or 10,000 One civilian is a civilian too many. So with that, I would definitely recommend that this council join with other councils, with other groups, in bringing their full support. As an addition, I noticed that in this resolution, there is a change I would make. It would be a change to send this not only to our U.S. representatives and senators, but to the President of the United States. He needs to hear from this city as well. With that, I leave that to your discretion, how we should proceed. I'd be happy to read the motion. I'd be happy to entertain further discussion.
If any councillor will make any comment that is not related directly to the language of the resolution, I will allow that now. If the comment is about the language of the resolution, I prefer to take the motion, and after the motion, take the comment. Is any councillor want to say something now? No? I will take the motion.
I move that this city council approve the East Hampton City Council resolution pertaining to the ceasefire in Gaza. Shall I read the entire motion? Thank you. Whereas all life is precious, the East Hampton City Council calls on all Massachusetts state and federal elected leaders and residents alike to protect life, stand united against violence, and advocate for the safety, dignity, freedom, and collective humanity of all people, regardless of religion, race, ethnicity, or nationality. And whereas this council is horrified by the Hamas attack on civilians and Israeli military that resulted in nearly 1,200 deaths and around 250 people taken hostage on October 7, 2023. And whereas since October 7, 2023, the Israeli government's offensive in Gaza, including heavy bombardment of and military incursion into hospitals, schools, residential buildings, religious sites, and cultural institutions, has killed over 32,490 people as of March 27, 2024, of which approximately two-thirds are women and children. And more than 74,889 have been wounded. And whereas the city of East Hampton condemns the recent rise in anti-Semitic and Islamophobic attacks in our state, including Western Massachusetts and across the nation, including by taking actions such as passing a resolution against antisemitism on November 15, 2023. And whereas the International Court of Justice, of which the U.S. is a member state, has ruled that Israel must take steps to prevent genocide in Gaza, including indiscriminate killing of Palestinians and deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. And whereas Gaza is in a dire humanitarian crisis with 1.8 million being displaced, food, clean water, medicine, and medical care severely lacking, and U.N. agencies and international organizations reporting that hunger, disease, malnutrition are widespread. And whereas the Israeli military is threatening a ground campaign in Rafa, where 1.5 million Palestinians, mostly displaced and living in tents, have nowhere safe to flee. And whereas U.S. tax dollars fund Israeli military operations, including $3.8 billion annually. In FY '23, East Hampton taxpayers contributed $154,134 of that total, according to the National Priorities Project. And an additional $14.1 billion is being proposed at a cost to East Hampton taxpayers of an estimated $571,919, according to NPP. And whereas 66% of American voters support the ceasefire and want to see the U.S. leverage its diplomatic relationships to further prevent violence and civilian deaths, according to an October Data for Progress poll, and now therefore be it resolved that this East Hampton City Council calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire between Israel and Hamas, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages and detainees on both sides, and an end to unconditional U.S. aid to the Israeli government. Be it further resolved that this council urges the Biden administration and the United States Congress to call for the same actions of an immediate and permanent ceasefire between Israel and Hamas, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages and detainees of both sides, and an end to unconditional U.S. aid to the Israeli government. And as a first step to a negotiated and lasting peaceful future for all Israelis and Palestinians, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Congressman Richard Neal, Senator Edward Markey, and Senator Elizabeth Warren, urging them to take immediate action to use their position and influence to end the violence. The motion.
Need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the East Hampton City Council resolution pertaining to the ceasefire in Gaza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
I have been.
We already vote.
I had the amendment about President Biden being added.
I'll just send it.
The clerk will send it to the President Biden.
Satisfactory.
Yes. Any against?
Abstention.
Abstention. Motion passing, one abstention. I ask, I ask. Consul Kuzinski.
With that business completed, we move on to next Wednesday, a meeting of the Rules and Government Relations Committee in Room 1 at 6:30 PM, 6:30 PM in Room 1, where any of the topics before us may be discussed at that time. We do hope that we will have our report on the ranked choice voting by the consultant who is the expert gentleman.
We have to extend.
And I would move to extend all items on the agenda for 90 days.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend the items that would need to be extended for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention. Motion passes. Let's conclude.
Just conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No business. Consul Derby.
Mr. President, we have one mayoral appointment, Cindy Sperry, to East Hampton City Arts, with expiration of 12/31/2026. I move that be sent to Appointment Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send the appointment of Cindy to the East Hampton City Arts to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention. Motion passes.
And next, we have a resolution in support of the Cherish Act, Higher Ed for All, which is something we'll be acting on tonight, so I will pass that over to Consul Denham.
Thank you, Vice President Derby. We had several speakers tonight talking about the Cherish Act. It is an act that has been put forward by many Western Mass, members of the Western Mass delegation. It is an opportunity for us to put increased funding into higher education. As someone who is an educator and works in higher education, every day I see the challenges of the increased cost of higher education and the toll that it takes personally, emotionally, mentally, spiritually, on our young people. And they are going to college in an effort to better their lives, and they are sadly taking on a debt that will stay with them for the entirety, for much of their life moving forward. And so this is an opportunity to try to remedy that situation. Also, as I mentioned in the letter, it enables people of all backgrounds and every community to build successful and fulfilling lives. It addresses economic, social, and racial equity gaps. It meets our state's climate challenge goals. It creates high-quality workplaces with fair wages and benefits to attract and retain faculty and staff. It enables new discoveries and innovation, and it is an investment in a competitive workforce that is the engine of our state's economy. And so there's a number of things that this act will in fact support. And so I'm asking that this council with President Gomez put this forward this evening for your vote.
Any council having any objections or passing tonight? Seeing none, Consul Denham.
So in the form of a motion, this is a resolution support of Higher Ed for All and one note. Also, before I read this, this is before the school committee, I believe, and so they will also be voting on this. So this is in a motion, as a motion. Whereas the East Hampton City Council recognizes that Massachusetts public colleges and universities are among the Commonwealth's greatest resources. Whereas our public colleges and universities are anchor institutions that are a significant part of the foundation of our state's regional economies and are essential to drive economic growth and provide essential services to our cities and towns. Whereas higher education is an important pathway to economic mobility, and public university graduates are much more likely to remain in Massachusetts after graduation, starting families, contributing to the economy, and forming the fabric of our local communities. Whereas public colleges and universities educate the majority of students of color and first-generation college students, and given the U.S. Supreme Court destructive decision on affirmative action, which threatens to undermine access to students of color. And whereas there remain significant opportunity gaps demonstrated by lower college enrollments and completions, particularly for Latino and Black students. Whereas tens of thousands of students in Massachusetts graduate from higher education each year but do not enroll in college, and 700,000 adults in our Commonwealth have earned some college credits but have not completed their degrees. And whereas new revenue from the Fair Share Amendment gives us the opportunity for transformative investments in public higher education that will remediate decades of underinvestment in public higher education by providing students with the opportunity to graduate from higher education debt-free, providing the student, the support for students that are, hang on a second, the support for students that are critical to help them graduate, and investing in staff and faculty salaries so that our institutions can recruit and retain high-qualified educators who will be able to afford to live in the community in which they work. Whereas investing in our public higher education institutions means investing in the students, faculty, and staff who are woven into our community and into our local economy. Therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council urges the legislature to pass the Cherish Act and support additional funding for public higher education, provided that a copy of this resolution so forthwith be sent to the state legislative delegation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution in support of Higher Ed for All. Any further discussion? Consul Smith?
Yes, I'd like to add a different point to the Cherish Act that I haven't heard mentioned yet, and that's the changing demographics of Massachusetts. Right now, when we look at our state tuition costs, one of the things that, as an educator at the college level that I'm seeing, is that all of the states around us are offering our students in Massachusetts the same rate that they would receive in-state here if they go out of our state. So Massachusetts geographically is pretty small. And another thing that's happening right now is that we have more people over the age of 65 than we have people under the age of 18. From a gerontology perspective, this is going to be a care crisis coming up. And of the labor pool that we need to have much more attention and much more students going into is both in health care and gerontology, is two of the main areas in labor that we need to prepare for in the future. So I have heard from constituents concern that this is tax money that could be spent better elsewhere, but I would argue that this is also investing in our future because we are seeing a rapidly declining younger population in Massachusetts. And if we do not offer competitive reasons for them to stay in Massachusetts, they will leave the state to go to school. And statistically speaking, students stay near where they got their education. So that is really an additional reason that I think needs to be put on the table for why this is important.
Thank you, Consul Smith. And it was really important. Any other councillor? For those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention. Motion passes. Mr. Vice President?
That is, oh, I'm sorry. We have a supplemental appropriation, and I will pass that over to Consul Peak. Thank you.
Yes, so it's just this one. I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $70,000 to be transferred from capital stabilization, $70,000 to be transferred to FY '24 municipal ADA improvement grant, $70,000. The amount requested will be used for the. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: Council of Aging Parking Lot Improvements, paving and striping, site design, site installations, expenses for which exceed the FY 2024 Municipal ADA Improvement Grant of $32,797.
And the public hearing?
Oh, yes, and I will also, I was going to do this as a second thing, I can do it once.
Once, yep.
Yeah. I will also, in the same motion, request that a public hearing be set for this item at our next meeting at 6:15.
Second.
Finance.
And.
Oh, yeah, yeah, or something in finance. You know, yeah.
Yeah, I know it.
Right.
And then a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the supplemental appropriation of $70,000 for the council and agent parking to lot improvement, and to schedule a public hearing in this chamber on April 17 at 6:15. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention. And I'm pretty sure that's everything we have on our agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? I guess now we're leaving. Thank you, everybody. Motion passes.